So I'm going to call to order and read the following statement and then we'll check back in to see if John's here. All right, this meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised at this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. If anyone is recording the meeting, could you either identify yourself or raise your hand using the raise hand icon? Lenny Rao, you've got your hand raised. I'm sorry, Lenny, are you raising your hand for recording the meeting or did you have a question? Sorry. Pam, can you unmute Lenny?
Yes.
Hi there, can you guys hear me? Hi.
Thank you. Hi, I can hear you.
Okay, awesome, I'm Lenny Rao, I'm a reporter for W A T D in Marshfield, I'm recording this meeting for radio.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have John?
He can't find the link, I just texted Pam, did you get my text and he can't find the link?
Oh, here he is.
Oh, here he is, we got him.
All right. Hello, John. Thank you for joining. All right, so just a quick, the first item on our agenda is new business, which is to receive a report on the proposed fiscal year 21 financial analysis plan and act as appropriate before we get to that. Yes, that's okay.
Sorry, this is Michelle Montag, I couldn't speak before, I need to record the Board of Selectmen meeting within this.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for letting me know, and that's a good segue because before we get to our first item of business, the Board of Selectmen are also here tonight attending this meeting and I believe they want a few minutes on our agenda, which we've agreed to provide. I think Karen, are you going to call to order and have your own short, brief meeting that we will be in attendance at? Pam, can you unmute Karen Johnson, her hand is raised? Pam?
Is it under Karen Johnson?
Karen Johnson, yep.
I don't see her.
The little icon is green.
Oh, at the top, yep, gotcha, sorry, I'm not sure why people aren't able to unmute themselves, I apologize. Karen, you should be all set.
Okay, thank you. I had raised my hand because before we progressed too much further, because three selectmen are on this call, I really do need to call the whole session to order, if you don't mind.
No, go right ahead.
So I would like to call to order the May 11th, 2020 meeting of the Hingham Board of Selectmen. And I, the same announcement that Michelle read, because we have kind of a meeting within a meeting going on here. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting are being recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 30A, 20F, so the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. I see that Lenny Rao is recording the meeting in general, so I take note that he's recording the Board of Selectmen segment of the meeting as well. But I'm assuming, you didn't see anybody else, Michelle, recording, so we're all set with that?
Yeah.
And sorry, this is Michelle Montag, one more time, Pam, can you give me permission to record within Zoom, please? Sorry for the technical difficulties here.
Is Pam recording?
This should be recorded to the cloud, but I don't see how.
The little recording button on my, as long as somebody's recording it, I just think it's important to have.
Okay, I just started recording it, I'm glad you mentioned that, I didn't catch that it wasn't being recorded. So it is now.
Okay, so we can get a copy of the recording then, right, as long as somebody's recording it?
Correct.
Okay. So Michelle, with your indulgence, I would move to the discussion on the only one item on our agenda, which is to attend and participate in the School Committee meeting regarding the FY 21 budget discussion and possible vote, is that okay if I move to that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I, first of all, appreciate the indulgence of the School Committee to allow us to have a few minutes at the start of your meeting to vote the Financial Management Plan for fiscal year 21. You know, I think your allowance of us to have this consideration time today meant that we had more time, frankly, at the end of the week, over the weekend, to take account of the comments that we received, both formally and informally from members of the School Committee as well as the Advisory Committee. So I think all in all, this is a much better product and I think a more responsible, a more responsive proposal and plan than, you know, we would have ended up with had we tried to, you know, kind of jam something through on Thursday. So I appreciate the time today. You know, in talking with my colleagues through Tom Mayo and Michelle Montagir, who were on the line, as well as Sue Nickerson, you know, they helped coordinate the conversations with Mary Power and Joe Fisher. And, you know, I think in terms of the sort of protocol to roll this out, because it's a plan being developed by the Board of Selectmen that would require, really, in order to work, it really requires the collective effort of the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, and the Advisory Committee. I think we felt like it was important that we formally recommend this plan to you. And so again, that's the reason why I was asking for a little bit of time at the beginning of the meeting, so that we could take it up and go. And then, you know, kind of officially recommend it. So, you know, many of you have participated and I appreciate that in our meetings over the last week or so, as this plan was coming together. And you've, you know, so you've heard us trying to balance a variety of things, which include known or projected revenue deficits for our FY 21 budget that would be presented to Town Meeting. As you know, municipalities cannot engage in deficit spending other than for snow and ice. So we really need to be in a position to recommend a budget to Town Meeting that is a balanced budget. And so with, you know, the significant economic downturn that frankly has evolved in a downward fashion, unfortunately, even over the last several weeks, we really needed to revisit revenue projections that are the basis for the budget and, you know, make decisions about how we could move forward to Town Meeting. Really on in the process, you know, one pathway is, we identified two pathways. One was to open the FY 21 budget, take account of the reduced revenue projections and make cuts to the budget we proposed to Town Meeting in keeping with where we think our revenue projections will land for FY 21. The other alternative is to take account of those revenue deficits and identify unbalanced amounts in the case that would allow us to utilize some of our savings accounts in a responsible way, coupled with financial management tools to, again, be able to recommend a balanced budget to Town Meeting. We chose the latter approach because we thought, and I don't mean to speak for Mary and Joe, they can speak for themselves shortly. I think what we were trying to do was be fiscally responsible, but really try to minimize the disruption at this point to the FY 21 budget, since we really just don't know where we're going to be. We don't, we don't know the resources we'll have or won't have. And it seemed, you know, we're trying to plan in a very uncertain environment. And, you know, I think this, the concept of using some savings, we've had conversations with capital market advisors, with financial advisors for the town about how we do that and when we do that and to what extent we do that. And so the amount that we've identified and coupled with the management tools and the plan that we will present to you today, we think represents a responsible position to put this budget before Town Meeting. And so I guess purely, we can move forward, again, with your indulgence. Michelle, I'd like to just see if Joe or Mary had anything to add before I would ask for a vote on this.
Sure. Good with me.
So, this is Joe Fisher.
You're good, right? Yes.
Good, so I think the revisions that I've seen from the last version to this version are significant. They're an improvement, they recognize the uncertainty of the economic environment. And at the same time, I think the intention is to afford the departments the appropriate level of flexibility to deal with the uncertainty. So I think this is a move in the right direction and I do support the current proposal.
Thanks, Joe. Mary, did you want to make a statement?
Yeah, sure, thank you. You know, I think we all know this, but this is very, this is very challenging because we're being asked to, you know, adopt a budget for next year in a period of great uncertainty. We don't know how long COVID, the impact of COVID is going to be. We don't know how deep it will be. In the last week, the projections that we thought were pretty bad two weeks ago have actually worsened. And, you know, we also don't know collectively what it's going to take to run a town in a post-COVID world. How will we transport children to school? How will we educate them? How will we house firefighters? How will we run an ambulance service? How will we operate a public library? There are more questions than answers, and yet, as Karen's already identified, we have to settle a budget with all this uncertainty. And, you know, for me, we all experienced this town in different ways, but, you know, I have a junior at Hingham High School who's going to be a senior next year, and this is the second economic recession that he's going to have to live through. The first one was disruptive, and, you know, this one has the potential to be as well. But as Karen said, you know, things could get worse. What I like about this plan is it's not taking anything off the table right now. It's giving us some flexibility, which kind of feels important at this time. But at the same time, we have to recognize that we are all kind of making a commitment to Town Meeting, which is that, you know, what we're saying to Town Meeting is, if you fully fund our budgets for this year and the revenue picture deteriorates, we commit that we will not spend 100% of what you're authorizing. And, you know, I would just add that I don't know of any other communities that are taking this step. I'm talking to my colleagues around, you know, who, they're in a situation where they're cutting their budgets right now. Brickline has furloughed 200 people, Newton has furloughed 91. Randolph, Natick, Rockland, and Hanover have furloughed people, and many of those towns are cutting their budgets. I'm glad that we're not in that situation right now, but I do think that as we go into Town Meeting, we have to demonstrate to the taxpayers that we are being fiscally responsible. So I feel like this plan gives us some options and some flexibility down the road. I support it and I hope our colleagues on the Advisory and the School Committee would as well. So thank you.
Great, thank you. So as I said, I think what I'd like to do now is ask the Board of Selectmen to vote on this and then it will become kind of our formal recommendation to you to take up and discuss the plan. And I guess, you know, depending on how you want to, you want to run with this, Michelle, you know, I'm happy to kind of run through the major attributes of the plan. Or, you know, Mary, Joe, Tom, Michelle, Sue, we're all here, if you want to take it up and then ask us questions or we'll just sit quietly and I'll enjoy my afternoon coffee. So however you want to do it, it's fine with me. But for my colleagues, I would accept a motion if you're ready.
I will move that the Board of Selectmen approve and adhere to the fiscal year 21 Financial Management Plan dated May 9, 2020, attached, which will be attached to this motion, and authorize the Chair of the Board of Selectmen to execute the plan. And hereby, we would approve and authorize the Town Administrator to manage the implementation of the plan on behalf of the Board of Selectmen in accordance with its terms.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Karen Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, so at this juncture, we have considered and voted the FY 29, FY 21 Financial Management Plan and we recommend it to the School Committee for their consideration and vote.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the Board of Selectmen and to Tom and Sue and Michelle Montagir for all your work on putting this together. It's been a whirlwind of a couple of, I don't even know, 10 days, two weeks, that it's sort of came up. And I think Mary's point is well taken, that, you know, other communities are going about this a different way. And I think we're fortunate that in our community, we do have the resources through fund balance to help offset some of these costs coming in. But also, we need to be mindful that, you know, what is being projected today may, I think we can probably all guess, will definitely not be what is projected a week from now. And I think that's a little bit of schools. You know, we have no idea what schools are going to look like in the fall, just like no one knows what the world is going to look like in the fall. So I think that we need to just discuss how we can manage through this process along with the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee and our fellow townspeople through the financial roller coaster that I think we've got coming up over the next probably 24 to 36 months. So with that, and apologies, this probably will be a little bit wonky, but Karen, I think we'll take you up on your offer to just sort of let us chat and jump in and ask questions of you or Tom or Michelle or other folks on the phone and we'll keep this, to the extent we can, a little bit free form. So for the School Committee members, our agenda item two, new business, is 2.1 to receive a report on the proposed fiscal year 21 financial analysis plan and act as appropriate. So we've heard a quick overview of the plan from Karen and the Board of Selectmen. You have all received the initial draft of the plan and right before we started this meeting, I apologize, but we had just received an amended version that just included some language around if revenue declines are worse than sort of projected, how that might be managed. So I know that was a lot to just get, literally probably 15 minutes before this meeting. So apologies, because it just, you know, it was coming in live. So John or Paul, do you want to give an overview, perspective? Do you want to? Does that make sense to you two? Because you've been a lot closer to this than some of us.
We've just seen it, just like you, I mean, we've gone through just the changes, just briefly with, I met with Tom Mayo and Michelle Montagir just a few minutes ago with John. Do you want to share the screen and try to move that up through? What's the easiest way to do that? I mean, how do you, has everybody seen it? I'm not sure where you want to start with the plan. How you want to go through it?
All right, so to my committee members, and sorry Pam, I think you might have to take, just for the purposes of this conversation, take the committee members off mute, if that's possible, so that I can ask some questions. So has everyone on the committee at least had a chance to review the draft that I sent over yesterday?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody not able to review the draft that I sent yesterday?
I did not.
You did not, you haven't reviewed it at all, okay. Sorry?
Sorry, no, I've been working, sorry.
No problem. All right, so. Let's just think, just, all right, so then, the amended version that I just sent out a few minutes before the meeting, actually, I hate to put Michelle Montagir on the spot, but Michelle, you, I think, had drafted that language and I think it was just one item that was added to it, right? Was that like item seven?
Yes, so what we added was point seven in section seven.
Okay.
Which is on page eight. And I'm happy to read it if you'd like, or whatever you'd like to do.
All right, Paul, do you want to share your screen?
I'm going to, why don't you go ahead and let her start and I'm going to go see if I can find it on my computer.
Okay.
So she wants to start that with just some of her own thoughts.
So Michelle, just to confirm, so this section is really the only change, right?
Yes, so we added point seven of section seven, and then there were very small language changes from Victor Baltara today. For example, the word moderated changed to modified in one place, or we changed FY 08/ FY 09 to FY 09. Like it wasn't anything else, very minor language changes.
All right. So this section seven, seven we'll call it, I think, if I'm not misspeaking, came from thinking about if revenues declined even more than we expected, then what would be, what's the next step, correct?
Yes, and I don't want to speak for Karen, I think she's, she's sort of the brains behind how we worded this.
Do you want to, Karen, just walk us through that really quick?
Sure, you know, frankly, it came from some back and forth with us, you and I, Michelle, which is, frankly, at any point, at any time, a special town meeting is certainly a technique that the municipality could use to address changes in, changes in the economic environment. That, so when we talked about, gee, if things are really, really terrible and, you know, we may need to go back to Town Meeting and ask for, you know, other resources, we might go back to Town Meeting because let's assume the federal government institutes a loan program and we can't, we can't apply for that debt without going to Town Meeting, you know, or are there other tools at the state level that might require Town Meeting approval? Or, you know, do we need to go to Town Meeting and frankly, cut the budgets, which is what we were trying to avoid? So I think a special town meeting is a tool that's always been on the table. The reason for, and so I think we just affirmatively reflected that in item seven of section seven, just saying if things go really south, you know, the Advisory Committee may recommend a special town meeting. I think that part of the reason to have the Financial Management Plan and not rely on just the tool of a special town meeting is, as you all know, the sort of lead up to using that as the management tool doesn't allow us to be as responsive as this economic environment strikes us that we may need to be. So I think that additional point essentially expresses a tool that the town has available to it, whether or not it's reflected in the plan.
Got it. Thank you. That's helpful. So for those listening in and for anyone who hasn't, I guess, for Lib B to just bring you up to speed. So I'll just give a little bit of quick background. So, and then I said this in my email to everyone yesterday with the plan, that there's really, going into this new economic environment that we are highly, well, we know we're going to be in, given, you know, even just simply meal sex with the news being declining. We are going to, and we're in a unique time period because we would have gone to Town Meeting already and gotten the budget approved, but with Town Meeting being postponed and seeing the financial impact that is highly likely going to come to the town, we have really, I think, two options here, right? The town could either reopen the budget and rework the entire budget for the fiscal year 21, or we could go to Town Meeting with the budgets as approved by Advisory Committee, Board of Selectmen, and the School Committee, but then agree to a Financial Management Plan that if revenues decline as expected, these are the levers that will be pulled. So the first lever, and anyone feel free to jump in if I'm misgating anything here, but the first lever is that the town will utilize fund balance, 3.3 roughly million of fund balance to offset the projected declines in revenues. In addition, the town and the School Department will start being, it's this tier one level of financial controls that we'll put in place that sort of, you know, for example, tier one, we will ensure essential hires and essential capital only. The Administrator and the School Committee and the Superintendent will identify actions within their own departments to manage non-personnel operating expenses. So that's sort of tier one, and that goes, that's just sort of fiscal management 101 as we go into this fiscal year 21. If we find that during the year, and this will be found by monthly forecast meetings and then quarterly reports to Advisory Committee, that we, revenues are dropping further than expected to the tune of more, if they change more than $500,000, then we will start implementing some tier two level austerity measures. So that's really it in a nutshell. The cost reduction responsibility would be 60% to the schools and 40% to the town. So I think that's it in a nutshell, unless John or Paul have more detail they want to add in there.
I think, Michelle, that you hit that very well. I mean, I think that, you know, we understood the concept and certainly in the spirit of this is that we take appropriate message to, I mean, methods now to pump the brakes and make sure that we go into the fiscal year with responsible debt thinking, understanding that we only hire those things that are essential for us, it would be no hire. And I'll be clear that there are no new positions in FY 21 for the school district. So there are no new positions with that. However, that every position is scrutinized in tier one, as well as our capital expenses. And so we would need to identify those areas that we would defer until we get perhaps later in the year and determine where we're at financially. John, I don't know if you want anything to that?
No, I think that captures it. I mean, we clearly, we would start the year and, you know, the vast majority of capital projects that we have would be sort of just watched and would pay only attention to those items that represented a significant safety or security threat or a critical preventative maintenance, which, you know, with a capital budget of 1.3 million, that's significant savings. But we would have to, I mean, we certainly wouldn't put any damper on our technology spending because that would be absolutely critical to education and, you know, whatever platform, you know, how school will look and the support we need to provide for school in September. The other thing that everybody should know is, you know, from a school perspective, you know, we're in a fortunate situation with school because the vast majority of our expenditures for a new fiscal year really don't start until September. Because, you know, we're not, the pay that the vast majority of employees, teachers, parents get or anybody would get during the summer is really the residual from FY 20 for shorted payments that, you know, over their pay. So July and August aren't heavy hitter months for us. So, I mean, between a deferral of capital as well as, you know, a couple of months reprieve for July and August, it would, gives us a lot of time to get the additional visibility into FY 21.
Thank you. Sorry, I had to change venues, folks. All right. All right, um, so with that, um, folks on the committee, do we have questions, comments, thoughts that people want to share? After, for those who had a chance to review it?
Michelle, do you want me to take it off screens here?
Um, sure.
Thank you.
Um, Michelle, I had one, oh, I had a comment.
Yes, please.
Um, so I want to thank the selectmen. I followed the conversations last week, and I really appreciate this, the way the plan is now. Um, I think, and I appreciate the collaborative nature of working it through. The, the one thing I noticed, and it's sort of in reference to what Mary was talking about of that we have many potential changes that are very unknown. Um, and in the references to COVID nineteen expenses in this plan, it, it's mostly related to reimbursable changes or reimbursable expenses that we may get reimbursements or not, it's unknown. And I was, wanted to suggest that in section seven, um, five C, that it says now, um, so this is, um, section five is about, um, the regular updates and the quarterly, um, updates that we'd be reviewing all expenses. And our C is other expenses or expenditure controls, um, including an itemized list of all COVID nineteen-related expenditures made in the prior quarter and planned for the current quarter that are anticipated to be eligible for reimbursement. And I wanted to throw out there, do we want to add and/or result in a change in operations to COVID nineteen-related actions? Um, and I bring this up just for the purpose of that all of the people in, you know, involved in this forecast group and as well as the community would have potentially a better understanding of how COVID nineteen changes are impacting the budget, impacting the, maybe explaining why we're spending more in certain areas and forcing us to spend less in other areas. Um, so that was the only thing I found in this plan that, um, I, I felt could just improve it a little bit. So, like, with public safety, if there are changes that the fire department or the police have to make, or in the schools, if we have to change, um, class sizes or buses, or how many kids are going to a school, changing schedules, um, it may not, you know, we can maybe, we add in the, within the budget parameters, but it may be a shift. So that was the only thing. Otherwise, I, I felt that the plan, um, covered everything, gave us enough management flexibility, um, but still put controls on spending so that we can all work together to stay within the revenues that we're receiving. And it's gonna be tough, but we'll get through it.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Liza. Um, other folks on the committee have questions or comments?
Carlos has his hand up, Michelle.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, I true, uh, like true echo, Liza, and thanking, uh, the town administrator and his team and the board of selectmen and the advisory uh, for coming up with this proposal. Uh, obviously, it is really up to town meeting to vote, uh, uh, on the, in favor of this. And I would urge that they do, uh, with the understanding also, there's an expectation from voters that we continue delivering, uh, an excellence, uh, education to our students. Uh, and, uh, you know, I believe we have been putting measures in place, uh, you know, as, as Michelle will be addressing two point two today. Uh, so, um, you know, uh, I am sure that we'll be fiscally, fiscally responsible, and, uh, we'll work, uh, with, uh, everyone involved. Uh, hopefully, uh, there'll be some, uh, reimbursement, uh, from either the state or federal government, uh, and it will help us, uh, alleviate some of this expenditures. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Carlos. Um, Carrie.
Hi, yeah, I, I agree with, um, Liza and with Carlos, and would like to thank the board of selectmen for, um, being very responsive to us and to think, I think it's a great plan, and it's, um, something that will give us a lot of flexibility as we meet. We don't know what, what education's gonna look like in September, so, um, this will be helpful. Um, I guess one thing, uh, I, I am in favor of the plan. Um, one thing we should probably all talk about, and especially with the committee, is how to communicate with the public, um, as, as we move forward with this. Um, there will be that forecast group that'll be working together, but, um, so sort of to Liza's point, it, it's important, if, as we are moving things around or shifting or making cuts, it's gonna be really important to communicate the why. That's just something to think about as we're going forward.
Okay, that's a good, that is a good point. Um, we'll have to figure out how to make those, um, that communication plan. Um, because you're right, not just on the budget implications, but how, what those budget implications have, how they're impacting the schools and what we're gonna be, um, how we're gonna be changing things. Good point. Um, anybody else? Um, I'm sorry, Joe Fisher, sorry, saw your hand raised.
Yes, hi, I just want to follow up on Liza's comment with respect to, uh, five C. Can that just be put back up on the screen so everyone can see that? Uh, so, yeah, there we go. So what I would anticipate her language change to be, uh, C currently reads other expenditures and, uh, other expenses and expenditure controls, including an itemized list of all COVID nineteen-related expenditures made in the prior quarter and for the current quarter. I think she's suggesting is comma identifying those that are anticipated to be eligible for reimbursement. Is that what the system would be looking for?
Yeah, I guess that covers identifying all of them as well as, and it, and then the reimbursement ones sort of separate category.
Well, I, I'm envisioning a list, and then you'd have a checkmark, those that are envisioned to be reimbursable and those that don't have the checkmark.
Yes, because, yeah, I, I would, I would love it if we get everything reimbursed, but I guess I'm being a little realistic and, um, so yes, I would agree with that.
Yeah, and, and to the extent that something is not reimbursable, uh, that seems to me would fall within the parameters of basically any other change. Um, because if it's reimbursable, it's going to be covered outside the budget by the reimbursement, and otherwise, it's going to be within the budget.
Yep, yep, that's understandable. Yep, I understand that. I just, yeah, I think it's good that everybody sees where things are going and why they're happening. Thank you.
Back down again, you okay? I can't see everybody when it's up there, so.
I think one, one thought that I had, and this is, I'm just trying to think if it needs to be stated in the document or, um, what, but I just want to make sure that we are complying with the Mass General Law Chapter seventy, which gives the school committee the autonomy to spend budget dollars as they need to, to protect student learning. So I think this document does that, um, that, you know, there's language in there about, um, advisory committee getting some oversight was one of the words, and Michelle pointed out earlier, um, I think modifying, um, things. And I, I don't know if people feel that that would be important just to insert maybe a sentence or two that just says, to the extent that this does not, um, overstep Massachusetts general law. Do you, you know where I'm going with that? Or do you folks think that it's just sort of implied in the document, and it doesn't need to be stated?
So, Michelle, what you're saying is just that the, the, I mean, as we enter into this, there's still, everybody still has the same understanding that the school committee is actually in charge of the, the appropriation and the expenditures they will make to make an education system for FY twenty one. This, in no way is this agreement detracting from that, or no way is this really passing the ball over to the advisory committee to say, hey, we're running your budget this year, the school committee is not. So, I mean, I think we all want that, I think we're all going into this with that understanding that the school committee is still the authority for the school budget. Is, is that right, Michelle, is that?
Yes, that is much better said, John, thank you. Yeah, so, and I just, do we think we need to memorialize that in this document? Um, I don't know what, what are the folks' thoughts on that? I'll leave it to the lawyers in the room, because I'm not one of them.
Carrie has her hand raised, Michelle.
Oh, thank you, sorry. Carrie, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so I had the same thought when I read it through too, um, and same concern because it, it is our responsibility ultimately. Um, but I, I'm thinking about it further and reading it through, I think with, there's so much representative, representation by the school committee in this, on the forecasting committee, and we are, you know, we're overseeing the superintendent as well. Um, and, I mean, I'm not a municipal law expert, but it seems that this document would not supersede Mass General Law. I mean, just the general rule, so I, so I was, I was, I had the same thought, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm comfortable with it the way it is.
Okay, no, that, that's fair, okay. Um, Mary, power? Oh, sorry, Pam, Mary's on mute, can you unmute her?
I did that, I just wanna, um, and I don't know if Karen or Joe or Tom wants to jump in. Um, I completely understand that Mass General Law gives the school committee the authority to spend budget dollars once they're authorized. But I think it's also, it's important to be clear on, on what we're asking the school committee to commit to, which is that, which is that if our revenue picture worsens, um, and, and budgets have to be reduced, that the school committee will join in that effort. So we are, you know, this is, this is in a way asking the school committee to, um, you know, to, to, to do that. And, you know, I, I've been saying all along that, that we all have to be in this together. And, you know, what I really want to make sure we avoid is a circumstance where, you know, let's say it's six months down the road and budgets have to be cut, let's just call it a half a million dollars. We're expecting that by, you know, adopting this plan with us, the school committee would be prepared to do that. And, and in fact, that's essentially what we're telling town meeting. If you give us a hundred percent of our budgets and the revenue picture worsens, we will give some of that money back. I do think that's important that we all understand because we are telling town meeting to trust us. And I, I think, and I know that we all value the trust that town meeting has in all of us. If budgets have to be reduced, we, we all have to do our part. That's what we're kind of agreeing to here.
Yes, absolutely, um, without question. Um, I think my only thought was just I wanted it to be clear that if budgets need to be reduced, that the school committee maintains the authority to decide how, how those expense cuts will be handled.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Exactly, good, sorry, good point of clarification, though. Thank you. Um, any other questions? I did, um, if folks don't mind, I did receive, um, an email from one of our former school committee colleagues, um, Christine Smith, she couldn't be at the meeting today because she had another meeting, but she asked me, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my other device here to find her email. She asked, oh, sorry, smoke alarm going off upstairs. Um, she asked me if I would read, um, a little statement that she had, um. Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry if everyone's hearing the smoke alarm going off upstairs.
It's live, it's live Zoom, what can we do?
Sorry about that, um. Sorry, um, all right. So if folks don't mind, I'm gonna read this from fifteen, and I barely read it myself, so I think it's good stuff. I'm just gonna read it for everyone, because she felt badly she couldn't be here. Um, since this dear Hingham School Committee, thank you for working so diligently during this unprecedented time in supporting Hingham's educational staff as they figure out best ways in which they can educate our children. Such a consequence in times of economic upheaval are real, and dealing with those realities on the local level is very difficult as you live closely amongst all Hingham taxpayers. As chair of the school committee during our last economic downturn in two thousand eight, two thousand ten, I understand the difficult decisions and consequences you all need to make as stewards of our town. I offer some context as I realize that, uh, many of us, including advisory and board of selectmen, um, may not have been on town committees during those trying times. Um, so keep this in mind as you digest alternate options in this very engaged town. Interestingly, in those years, we were also trying to build a new school to accommodate increased enrollments, which also typically requires an operational override to pay for expenses associated with the operation of a new building and its staff. This scenario may sound familiar as you work to participate with the MSBA in building a new foster school while considering funding items for operations. During this time, the town is at risk for losing its coveted triple A bond rating primarily due to inadequate fund balance, coupled with the relatively new general accounting practice known as OPEB or other post-employment benefits. After lots of lost sleep, town boards all walked away with some of what they needed, but not at what they all wanted. Always a sign of a difficult negotiation. Um, I'll, I'll forward this to everyone, but Christine gave some really great context around those budget items, OPEB, the debt exclusion, um, operational overrides for each school budget. Um, so she said our main objective is always to open the new school, um, not to eliminate things and to protect the education of our students. Um, fast forward ten years, and you're all facing very similar decisions, which is interesting that it's been a decade and his same, almost the same issues facing us, but from a new cause. Um, please work to the best of your abilities in conjunction with advisory and board of selectmen while supporting education. Try to keep the larger picture in mind as you consider the issues before you. I do take great comfort in my local government during these uneasy times due to strong leaders and engaged community. Thank you, Christine Smith. Thank you, Christine, for those comments. Um, any other questions or comments from any committee members or members of the public? Give that one minute to see.
Michelle, you're on mute, just in case you don't know.
Thank you.
Joshua Rush. Hand raised, Michelle. Joshua Rush.
Hey, how's it going? Thank you all for, for all the work you guys are doing. Just a quick question, is the plan gonna be available to the public so that everyone can see it, or is it out there already?
That is an excellent question. Um, it's the Board of Selectmen's plan, so Karen or?
Yeah, 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 it's been voted by the board, you know, my sense would be it would be on the website tomorrow. Um, yeah, it's a public document.
Okay, and then, so my other question, I guess I have two other questions. One is, and, and Christine just mentioned it, with the triple bond A, uh, A rated, um, with the fund balance, do we have a sense of what that fund balance minimum has to be in order to keep the triple A rating? Um, and are we looking to dip into that to cover some of these expenses?
Do you want me to take that?
Karen, that would be great, yes.
Um, so Mary, I think Mary's in, in sort of more, um, consistent communication with capital market advisors, who's the financial advisor for the town that I mentioned at the, the beginning of the meeting. But with respect to this particular request, um, to use, to put before town meeting to use fund balance to plug, um, what we anticipate to be an operating deficit, we took that question particularly to capital market advisors. And I think, Josh, one of the things- I think Josh, one of the things that's important, and again, Mary may be able to provide better context than, than I do. The metrics I think that are important to the, the rating agencies in terms of our, our credit profile include our fund balance as that puzzle, but I'm, I've become increasingly aware that the number in the bank account is one thing, but it's really the, the financial management infrastructure around that, around the fund balance that is really, really important to the credit rating agencies. So so that we had this conversation with capital market advisors about using, you know, what I consider a significant yet yet prudent amount of our savings account in these challenging times to move forward into FY21. Janet Morley, who's our, our, one of our financial advisors, indicated that that would be okay so long as there were financial management tools that accompanied that. So that was really, you know, I think we had all been trying to think through how we hold ourselves accountable once town meeting writes the check. But I think it was after those conversations that we really were drilling down on this need for a financial management plan. So I, I think that, again, given my conversations with capital market advisors, this $3.3 million use of fund balance, I, I think will not create what's in the, in the sort of credit rating parlance in immediate insignificant credit event for the town. But it's the use of that fund balance coupled with the financial management plan that allows us to get over that bridge.
All right, thanks Karen, that makes a lot of sense. And then just one final question, and I haven't looked at the plan yet, but is there anything in there that takes into account any sort of mandates funded or unfunded from the state that has to do with COVID-19? So if the state tells us we have to do X, Y, and Z and it costs $500,000, is that still part of the reduction plan or is that sort of exempt from stuff that we have to do?
Yeah, I think that was, that was part of the clarifying point that Liza and Joe both spoke. So we are anticipating that the town will receive reimbursement from, for instance, the first round of CARES Act funding, that reimbursement will be administered through Plymouth County. I don't think we're entirely clear on the amount that we, we would receive and what strings might be attached to those expenditures. But I think what the model is trying to do is project any incremental increases in annual budget deficits. So we've plugged the hole to now, right? And if things happen where we continue to either incur expenses above those that are budgeted or materially different from those that are budgeted and/or there is a downturn in the revenues that we can anticipate, those will, those, you know, those situations will be reviewed with the forecast group and the advisory committee. They, you know, we, we may need to institute greater degrees of austerity measures as a result. The, the thing that we tried to build into the model though, and it's not different than what we've done with other reimbursement programs, is if the state says something like, you know, you need to, we're going to allow schools to open, but you have got a, you've got to have bigger cafeteria space or you've got to run two bus runs a day or whatever it is. And, and by the way, either we, the state, or the CARES Act will make funds available to you to, you know, offset to some degree those costs. We would hold that harmless in this model. In other words, those wouldn't count to an in, increase in an annual, in the annual budget deficit because we would anticipate reimbursement for those. So we are trying to be mindful of what resources would be available to the town for, for reimbursement of COVID-related expenses so that we don't push ourselves into austerity measures if we think we're going to get revenue in the door.
Okay, thank you. I look forward to reading the, or full report.
Thanks, Josh, good to see you.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you. Mary Power, get your hand raised.
I, I just wanted to add one other piece of this to what Karen said, which is that on Friday, Massachusetts Municipal Association actually gave an update on things as best as they know. And what they are talking about, which we are also seeing is the impact of COVID-19 is expected to go beyond FY21. I think one of the members of the school committee referenced, we're going to be dealing with the financial impacts of this for a couple of years. So as we are looking at using our fund balance, we are also mindful of the fact that we may have similar budget challenges in fiscal year 22. So in, in looking at all this, I'm trying to adopt a multi-year view because that's, that's what we're, we've been told to, to have to prepare for.
Mary. That's, and that's the same tact that the school committee is taking as well and the same considerations we're thinking about, right? What does fiscal year 21 look like? And then also we have to be very mindful of, you know, fiscal year 22 and 23 as well. So those will be top of mind for us as well as we make our decision. Is there anyone else with any questions from the public? All right, seeing none. Is, are folks, do folks feel ready to act on this today? Someone wants to make a motion? Carrie, go ahead.
I'll be glad to. I'm sorry, go ahead, Carrie.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the School Committee of the Town of Hingham hereby votes to approve and adhere to the fiscal year 21 Financial Management Plan dated May 9th, 2020. Sorry, on that, I know there were some updates to the language today, so will there be a different date on that?
No, I, I think, well, I, I think from where I come from, where I'm coming from, yeah, we, should we date the plan today? We voted it today? Because then, then it would encompass the changes today. And can I, do you mind if I make one more, one more? And I don't know how Joe and Mary feel about this. I think that the clarifying language that Liza suggested to me is a ministerial change and I, I'm fine with inserting the language that he described to Michelle without the board of selectmen needing to revote this. I think it's just a, a clarifying change. I don't, I don't think it's material to the document.
Karen?
Yeah.
This is Joe. I think to the extent that we're going to be posting the document online, local to amend it. I agree it's a ministerial change, but it's also, I think, at this point really easy for us to just to have our vote to make sure that language is included. And I agree with your suggestion that should really be dated as of today. This is when we're, when we're adopting it.
Well, we're interrupting the school committee vote right now, so.
That's all right, still in motion, so that's all right. Well, Carrie, are you good with continuing with your motion or?
Let's, I'll just restate it. I'm going to make a motion that the School Committee of the Town of Hingham hereby vote to approve and adhere to the fiscal year 21 Financial Management Plan dated May 11th, attached here though, to and authorize the Chair of the School Committee to execute said plan and hereby vote to authorize the school superintendent to manage the implementation of said plan on behalf of the school committee in accordance with its terms.
Carlos, did you want a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion of the motion as presented? All right. Seeing none, I'll just take a roll call vote just since I can't see everyone. Ness, Corenti? Can you say that again?
Yep, aye.
Thank you, I didn't hear you. Libby? Libby, are you out there? I'm sorry, I can't. I can't hear, I can't, couldn't hear you, you're breaking up a bit.
I'd like to abstain.
Okay. I'm still be abstaining, thank you. All right, Alissa?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Ed?
Aye.
Thank you. Carrie?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. All right, so the motion carries, six ayes and one abstention. All right, thank you, everyone. Just quickly, just as a thank you, really do appreciate the collaboration here. I know this is very quick to get done, so appreciate the work over the weekends that Michelle and Karen and Mary and Joe and Paul and John put into this. And I think Mary said it before, right, the townspeople are trusting us at town meeting to maintain our financial stewardship. Our educators and our students and our parents are trusting us to ensure that we're protecting student learning and I do believe, along with everyone else involved here, that this is the best way to go about protecting both student learning as well as the town's finances. So appreciate everybody's work on this. Great, well done. All right, we have one other new business item, which is item 2.2.
May I?
Yep.
Perhaps Karen Johnson would like to also, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure if it's allowed to go ahead and vote on her amending?
Yes.
The document?
Yep, I see Karen's hand is raised. So Karen Johnson, I'd recognize you.
Yeah, so I'm wondering to Carlos's point, you want, do you want us to revote now or do you want to move through the rest of your agenda? We could take it up at the end.
Um, you can do it now, if you like.
So for my colleagues, I would take a motion that would consider the plan dated today, the 11th, which would include the modification proposed by Liza and clarified by Joe a little earlier in our discussion. So when I say the plan dated today, it would include that, that ministerial change. If someone.
I would, if that was a, a motion, I would second it. Or, or I would, I would make that motion. There we go.
Second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor of that motion? Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen, aye, thanks.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for pointing that out, Liza. And thank you, Carlos. All right, so I'm going to move on to 2.2, which goes back to Carlos had made reference to this. 2.2 is to receive the appointment of members to the finance subcommittee. So even before COVID-19, the school committee had discussed potentially setting up a finance subcommittee whose sort of primary goal would be to help John Ferris, our Director of Business Services as he works through budget items revolving accounts, all, all things budget related. So several members had expressed an interest in joining this subcommittee. That is, is very typical as well. There are most school committees do have a finance subcommittee. So we had voted at our last meeting, I think it was our last meeting, to enact a finance subcommittee. And I am going to appoint to that committee after hearing from members of the school committee who, of their interest in serving on it. I'm going to appoint to that committee Kerry Me, Liza O'Reilly and Ness Corenti to that subcommittee. And I'm actually going to appoint Ness as the Chair of that subcommittee. And I folks will, we have a meeting very soon to start working on some of these things. And again, appreciate you be stepping up to do this work and I know Carrie's, I think, already done some work on looking at what other towns do and how their subcommittees are organized and, and what their function is. So again, this is meant to support Mr. Ferris. He has a lot on his plate as business manager, a director of business services and I'm hopeful that this group of very talented people will be able to maybe hopefully lighten his load a little bit and help drive some policies around some of the financial items we have on our busy plates. So thank you to the three of you for agreeing to be on that subcommittee. All right. Item three on our agenda is any 48-hour items? No one mentioned any, so I don't think we have any.
Michelle, it's not 48 hours, but you have another scheduled meeting for Wednesday? Do you want to hold that meeting or no?
No. Sorry, so Pam, just in case I wasn't sure if we were going to have enough time to deliberate and vote tonight. But seeing that we have, we had posted a meeting for Wednesday and I would now not hold that meeting. So everyone in agreement with that? All right, so Pam, I don't know how you.
I will cancel it, no problem.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for that reminder, Paul. Do you have any other 48-hour items? All right, seeing none. Our next school committee meeting then will be next Monday, May 18th at 7:00 PM. Not with that, I would take a motion to adjourn. Oh, and I am muted, no, I'm not muted again. Carrie?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Liza. Ness, in favor?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Thank you, Liza.
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, went over there. Dr. Ed?
Aye.
Thank you, Carlos.
Aye, and just for your permission, Karen Johnson's hand is up.
Oh, sorry.
But when you're done, I need to, we need to adjourn too.
Okay, and I am an aye as well. So adjourned and I'm going to turn it over to Karen to repartee.
I would accept a motion to adjourn for, for the board of selectmen. All is in favor, Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Karen Johnson, aye. Thank you very, very much. This was awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.